We're going to open the Victoria County Council meeting for Monday, April 20. And the agenda has been circulated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda for this evening's meeting? Hearing none. Can we have a motion to accept the agenda as circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Council McNeil, second by.
Deputy Warden Daphne.
Deputy Warden, all in favor? Five. Ontario minded. Motion is carried and the agenda has been approved just prior to tonight's meeting. It's been a tough weekend for us across his province. It's also been a tough weekend for CBRM. CBRM lost a long time municipal councillor Ray Kouloushe. He died, I think, on Saturday or Sunday. He was a long serving member of CBRM council. He is, I think he was a colleague and a friend to a number of us, so we would like to extend their sympathies to his family. Also, our thoughts are also with the victims and families in Colchester County. For the unprecedented tragic events of the weekend that happened there. And I think in respect to to both of those events is that we just take a moment silent, a moment of silence and reflection for a moment, please. Thank you very much. So our first item in business tonight, we have Dave Parkinson. He is the Chair of Physician Recruitment and Welcoming Committee. For the committee, one of the committees that have been set up in Victoria County for physician recruitment in the southern end. So we'd like to welcome Mr. Parkinson to our virtual council meeting tonight. And Dave has a short presentation that he's going to bring us up to speed on what the activities, the committees have been up to. So we'll turn it over to you, Dave, and the floor is yours. Once you're done with your presentation, we'll probably open it for questions and comments from any of the councillors. So you okay with that, sir?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much for the invitation. I appreciate the opportunity to, to come here and be able to fill the council in on the steps that we have taken as a new committee in order to, you know, further the, the effort that the county had put forward into recruitment over the past number of years. It just, I don't want to, um, you know, go into all of the details, but just as a reminder to everybody, back in the fall of last year, three of the physicians came to county council. They indicated that they had some, some very significant concerns regarding the ability to get more physicians into the facility, the Victoria County Memorial Hospital. In particular, I remember being at that council meeting and Dr. Trebo and Garcia having some, you know, general comments that weren't as maybe pointed as Dr. Genj might have liked. He, he really referred to it as a crisis and I think many of us felt the, that that was an appropriate word to be used. The, the county then thankfully took it upon themselves to chart a path forward that would, would facilitate community involvement. I was at that initial community meeting and subsequently got involved with the physician recruitment and welcoming committee. After some meetings with the larger group, the groups broke down into what originally was, was four committees. I became the Chair of the Physician Recruitment and Welcoming Committee. There was a fundraising committee that's currently chaired by Margot McCauley. There's an advocacy and communications committee that is currently chaired by Kathy McKenzie. There's a fourth committee that's not really a committee, I suppose. It's more of a group of interested volunteers who have said, look, if anything comes up, we're here to help. You just have to let us know. As committees, we have met many times since we sort of really formed in late in 2000, late last year. And we've met both as individual committees and we've met as, as groups. We've also met one time with the Victoria County Hospital Charitable Foundation. Through that effort, it's been a bit of a, bit of a struggle to really understand what our role was and to figure out how we can best move this recruitment exercise forward. And in, in doing that, we were very fortunate on the physician recruitment and welcoming committee to have the attendance of both the facility administrator as well as the attendance with physicians at each of our meetings. So it really gave us an opportunity to understand what the needs of the facility are and what the best way forward is. Through that, we have identified that there's kind of three primary directions that we have to go in. We have to be able to develop a strong locum program. The purpose of the locum program is basically to provide a, a, a way to bring in physicians to just fill the needs of the emergency room challenges that are now present at the facility. We also have identified that we need to hire at least two and preferably three new physicians. Currently, we have been given the green light by NSHA, we being the, the, the facility to hire two physicians, but it's a strongly held belief by everybody involved that there's at least three that are needed, if not more. We also identified that there really be a facility expansion. Now, I put the word expansion in, in quotes in the document that I sent through because it doesn't necessarily mean that an expansion of the physical building is required. It means though that there is an expansion of how, how services are provided, either through a separate facility. For example, it could be a separate structure where the collaboration and the physician activities occur from a clinical standpoint. But yet that, that expanded space has to be very closely connected to the main hospital itself. Because all of the physicians have a role both to play in the wellbeing of the hospital as well as in the wellbeing of the clients that they serve. So through, through that sort of primary grouping of objectives, we further identified that we needed to really figure out how to step up our game relative to recruiting physicians. We, we very quickly realized that we're frankly in a competition to bring physicians to this area. And we're in a competition with our neighboring facilities in our neighboring communities. And the physicians are in the driver's seat in that we need them and there's fewer of them than is the need within the facility. So we have to figure out, well, how do we, how do we sell ourselves? And so part of what we've struggled with is, is how to develop that, that way to promote the area, promote the facility, understand how to promote it, given that the, with the exception of the, you know, the administrative staff that supports us from the facility and the physicians, it's really just a bunch of laypeople that are involved with this recruitment exercise. So through that, we identified that we needed to develop a webpage that we could use to promote the area, promote the facility, connect it to job opportunities, connect it to recreational activities and tourism benefits of, of living here, possibly connected to, you know, real estate places, websites where potential recruits could go and look at different, you know, living arrangements that might be available. We also looked at different opportunities that we had to welcome physicians into the community. We recently had a locum that was planned through the physicians at the hospital. And that person was supposed to arrive from April the 10th through the 29th. That got canceled on account of the COVID crisis. But we had to make arrangements to find accommodations for that person as well as get some, some food ready and get some welcoming activities ready again in the, the premise that we're trying to shine a spotlight on the community and the surrounding communities in order to make them feel like this is a place to move to. This particular person, it was a woman. I don't recall her name right now. She was actually from Nova Scotia and she was using locums as a way to test out where she may want to finally lay down roots into the future. She is going to come back once the COVID crisis is over. We've also been in constant contact with the new recruiter, Bill O'Brien with NSHA. He has dreamt up an opportunity to do what he's referred to as a clinic crawl. So what he's going to do is bring down upwards of 10 physician residents. They're going to come to the, this part of Cape Breton being the straight Buchanan Memorial Hospital and Victoria County Memorial Hospital over the course of about two or three days. Bring them down, have them spend some time going through the straight, have them spend some time going through Bedeck and then have them spend some time going through Niels Harbour with the intent to show them those facilities and show them those communities. Our role as the recruitment and welcoming committee is to again showcase the area surrounding the Victoria County Memorial Hospital to show them our hospitality, to show them what activities there are available to them. So part of that, of course, is getting accommodations arranged, meals arranged, welcome activities. Some of the things that we thought about was, well, maybe we can arrange a, you know, a catered meal at, at Big Spruce, for example. We, we also have some other possible physicians who are, have expressed an interest in coming into the area and seeing the facility, and that is in the fall, late summer, fall. Not sure where, where COVID will, will impact that or if it will impact that, but at this point there are some future visits planned again. We will have the need to put these people up to provide them with some meals, possibly rent some cars for them, provide them with some activities. You know, when I went through this, I spent a lot of time talking with other recruitment, other groups in other areas of the province and quickly realized that this is a money game. It's a long game and it's a money game. And when I say it's a money game, you have to be able to sell the community. And I'll give you an example in the foundation that looks after the hospital in Liverpool. They had a, a physician recruitment activity sponsored by NSHA that was probably pretty similar to the clinic crawl that Bill O'Brien is, is trying to get organized. And through that, they, they kind of zeroed in on a particular physician who was from the valley, but lived in Ontario. So after this individual left, the, the committee reached out to this individual and invited them, him and his wife back to Liverpool for a four day, all expense paid trip to show off the community. And that involved hotel, airfare, rental car, meals, everything, no out of pocket expenses for them in order to pitch the benefit of their hospital to that particular person. That happened once. There was then down the road got the person interested, but this person had a contract with an existing facility in Ontario. So the Liverpool Hospital Foundation was able to say, okay, we'll buy back your, your current contract in order to allow you to break that contract and then come to Nova Scotia. So through that effort, they were able to get this physician and the physician's wife, who happens to be a teacher, to move back to Nova Scotia. So through that, we know that this exercise is going to involve money. We do have fundraising activities planned, although they're all pretty much on the back burner right now while COVID's going on. We did though start an initiative to get the new webpage up and running and we've, we have an actual cost for that webpage of $2,500. We've also had some branding and recruitment related promotional material prepared, at least the artwork for it prepared. That cost for that artwork preparation was $500. We know that we're going to have to have promotional material printed. You know, the quantities and the amount of that is, is currently unknown, but, but based on my experience with getting ready to print materials for the capitola relay race, I fully anticipate that those costs could be another $1,000 for printed material, for good quality printed material. We also know that we're going to have to pay for accommodations for meals and for welcoming activities. A lot of those costs are not definable until we have actual dates and we have actual numbers. But we know that there are real costs that we have to be able to manage and, and that's the reason why, you know, the committee has, has already asked for money from the county and this is really meant to be an update to the county so that you have a sense of where we're going for the money that you generously offered us. And you can see that the path forward has been, has been charted. We think it's a good path forward. We have the support of the facility in this path. And we think with, with time and with the perseverance of the long game that we're, we're now on, we will be successful.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Dave, and your committee and the other committees. We appreciate the amount of time and effort that we folks have put into physician recruitment. And I think you described it very well. It's, it's, it's going to be a marathon. It's not going to be a sprint, that's for sure. So I think what we'd like to do, just given it is a virtual meeting, that we would certainly open it to any questions or comments. I'm sure some of the councillors from the southern end of Victoria County have some questions or comments for you. So we'll start there and start with District Number One, Council McNeil. Any questions or comments?
No, just a comment, David. And I want to thank you for all the work you put into this. It sounds like you, you've been busy over the last few months to, to get this committee up and going and all three committees, basically. You know that council thinks that physician, not only physician recruitment, but medical staff recruitment is one of the most important things for the county right now, especially with what's going on right now. So I want to thank you for all your work. Thanks.
No, I appreciate it and we appreciate that we didn't start from square one. We actually had some, you know, some activities, strong moves that the county had made in the, in the past to get us going. I think the one thing it's worth noting that we, you know, it's called the physician recruitment welcoming committee, but the one thing that's also become very clear to us is that although we have an immediate physician challenge, we also have a nursing challenge at the facility as well. And once we can manage to resolve the, or at least help to alleviate physician challenge, we then fully intend on moving this forward with a more broad recruitment exercise to retain, you know, the number of medical professionals that we need, the facility going the way it needs to operate.
Thank you, Council McNeil. And thanks, Dave. We'll move on to District Number Two, Perla. Council McCloud, any questions?
No, just a comment, the same. Thank you for all of your, your, your work. I'm, last year, last two years, I'm sitting in that committee and we see the challengers and, and and the good things happen when the committee go together. So anything we can help and by my personal can help, just let me know and we, I like, I would love to be involved too for, you know, welcome these physicians and and showcase our county, you know. And thank you for, for taking all these. And I know it's a long way, but little things counts a lot. So I like when you, you're just moving in the small things instead of just go to the big, big picture. So thank you.
Yes, yes, no problem. We tried the big picture first, but we realized our heads were so we tried to break it into a bite sized pieces.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Council McCloud. We're just going to jump up to Council Budge, just because he's in by phone. And I just want to check with you and then we'll come back to District Four. But Council Budge, since you are by phone, is there any questions or comments?
No, I just thank them for the job well done there.
Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate that. And we're going to go back to District Number Four with Council McInnes, please.
Sorry for the late start here. Oh wait now. There, you hear me now?
I'd ask you to speak up a little, please, sir.
Okay, sorry for the late start. I I have to admit, I forgot. But Dave, Dave, thank you for stepping up to the plate and I know you've done a lot of work. You're in your committee and if there's anything I can do to help or chip in at any point, feel free to contact me and you're, you're you're doing a very, very good job and thank you very much for, for, for being there for us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, District Number Five, Council Patterson.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, David, for all your work and your committees that you've set up. A few years ago, this wouldn't be a problem on this side of the mountain. But as we all know, with the virtual closure of Northside General ER, people from, from Bulliery and further afield, of course, too, are going to bed for medical services. As a matter of fact, I even did that myself about a month ago. My doctor was on vacation and the ER in North Sydney was closed. And as I always say, when you get to the end of the Kim Ted Road, if you go left, it's half an hour to Bedeck. If you go right, it's half an hour to North Sydney. So, you know, people have made that decision. People will take the path to Fleet Resistance and go. So I think that's really part of your issue too, where the patient load, I know that the doctors talked about it when they were at council that night, the patient load has increased dramatically. So you know, it's, it's, we need the physicians for sure. Thanks again.
And, and we know that, um, as I referred to, this is the long game. We know that there are physical changes that will be happening in the industrial area that may alleviate some of this. However, it's going to be five plus years at, at least before those are in place. And so from now until then, this, this problem is going to exist. It may not even be alleviated because the facilities that they're building in North Sydney and New Waterford, they're not being called hospitals, they're being called health centers. So we don't know what that context means as it relates to emergency, the provision of emergency services. It could mean that they still intend on providing everything at the regional, which may the pressure still existing at the Victoria County Memorial Hospital. So needless to say, we're assuming that nothing's going to change and therefore that's the reason and the fire under us to get the physicians in here as soon as we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Patterson. And my apologies, I spoke to Mr. Budge and indicated he was District Six. I think I made an error there. District Six is the Deputy Warden's district, so my apologies. And I should know my Victoria County geography by now. So any questions or comments from you Deputy Warden, save you for Mr. Parkinson?
Thanks very much, Warden, and myself and Mr. Budge, or Council Budge, work quite closely and kind of share a little bit of territory. So not a problem whatsoever. Dave, thanks very much. Great update. Great to see this work being done. We are a little more fortunate north of Smokey with our doctors, but we do have doctors that wish to retire and it's, it's also critical down here, but we've been a little more fortunate than Bedeck mainly because we don't have the influx from the CBRM because of our location. But we will be keeping an eye on how you guys proceed and once we get through this pandemic, we will be working with our foundation here at Buchanan Memorial to push forward and hopefully attract some new doctors and other medical staff to our facility. But once again, thanks very much for all your work and we'll be keeping a close eye and taking any hints that we can get from you as we move forward. Thanks very much.
Well, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Just point out that we've actually, through the administration at our, at the facility of Victoria County, we've reached out to Buchanan Memorial because our understanding is that that facility has a very strong locum program. And we're trying to understand, you know, what we need to do to the same program for Victoria County.
Thank you very much for your comments, District Six. We appreciate that. We're going to move to Council McDonald, District Eight.
Well, I just want to say thank you, David, for all your work thus far. And as Deputy Warden, it stated there, we're in a pretty good position up here in the north end of the county. Look forward to further developments as they become available. I would just say thank you again for all your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just a couple of quick comments before we let you go, Dave. Again, want to thank you very much for the your leadership in this, declaring our community and not only do council appreciate it, but the community itself does. And you know, from being a resident of the deck, that the hospital is still under siege. We still have a lot of traffic. We just, this issue has been a little quiet the last while, just because of what's going on in the current environment of COVID and coronavirus. So we, we know that this issue is not going to go away and we know it's going to resurface once the pandemic is lifted. Just one quick question for you. We know that you alluded to the fact that the planning is underway for both North Sydney and Waterford and regional itself. Have you had any opportunity to speak to anybody with the regional hospital planning committee to see how the changes that they are considering and planning and engineering? Are they, have they given any thought to what the potential impact could be to both our rural sites?
We were, we were just getting organized to get ready to do that. We, myself, Margot McCauley and Kathy McKenzie had a meeting. We talked about the different strategies and how to divide the work. Because initially, when we got started, we were sort of, we were doubling up what we were doing and we needed to not make that happen so that we could get the most efficient use of the volunteer resources that we had. So at that meeting, we decided that it really was the advocacy and communications committee's role to really go out there, understand what was happening in the future, understand how that was going to impact our facilities. Try to, you know, do a little crystal ball gazing so that we could in turn turn back and advocate for needs for the facility. Like, for example, you're not changing anything down there in industrial Cape Breton. You've only told us we can have two physicians. Well, now we want four and here's the reason. So we were all set to get that ball started and all of a sudden everything went to heck on us with COVID. So it ground to a halt, but that is one of the next talking points that we have to deal with.
Very good. Well, we appreciate the update. We all, you, as you know, we've allocated funding for funding the committees and as you were requesting funding, we would ask that you contact the CAO both to give us an indication of the amount of money that you require for certain projects that you have going. So with that, are there any final questions or comments for Dave?
Yeah, I'll just note there, there's, is money left in that line on the budget. Last year's budget, which was already approved. So Dave, yeah, you and I can be in touch and can figure out what, what we can allocate to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I do, Mr. Morrison, have one unrelated comment. If I could hijack the agenda for just a second, if I'm allowed to do that.
Well, you just did. So go ahead.
Now, I'm just going to take off one hat and put on my Cabot Trail hat and just make sure that over the years, the county has been a tremendous, tremendous supporter of the event. As all of you have no doubt heard, the event had to be canceled this year. We, we have only canceled it this year. We fully intend on starting it up again next year. We very much look forward to the continued support of the county, but we will not need the county's support this year for this year's race, obviously, because it's not happening. So.
No, and again, thank you for that as well. We appreciate the update. We we know that the event was canceled. It's unfortunate because we certainly look at that event as the kickoff to our tourism season. It is unfortunate that that and other events are certainly going to have a negative financial impact in our communities and and I would certainly encourage you next year to approach council and look again for our sponsorship. We certainly know the value that event has to Victoria County. Thank you very much for any more for that update as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, if I can figure out how to hang up, I'll be all set.
I think if you go up to the corner, it says lead meeting. You can lead the meeting or you can stay for council, either one.
Bottom right, Dave.
Yeah, bottom right, I see.
It's gone. All right. Thank you very much. And we're going to move on. I'm just going to take a quick look at the agenda here. We're going to look at the minutes for April 6th. That was the first virtual council meeting, I believe, we had. Those minutes were circulated to you some time ago. Thank you, Heather, for sending those out. Are there any errors or omissions in those minutes? We have a motion to approve the minutes as circulated.
Approve.
Moved by Councilor McLeod, seconded by
Second.
Councilor McNeil, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. The minutes are approved. Is there any old business arising from those minutes?
I just have a couple of things just to let you know that we sent the letter off to the UARB asking for deferral of water payments coming in and billing. And we got that back within, I think it was less than a day to have that approved. So we have an approval from the UARB related to that. Just to let you know, there's also been several kind messages come back related to the Tim Hortons initiative by council. We are working on something down north, so I'll have more information on that as we get in touch with the gas stations down that way. Zeno was going to give them a call. So just to let you know that that did work really well. And it was very, one of them that came back said that they were appreciated. It was from a truck driver and he said he wouldn't even realize the importance of such a small gesture. So just so you know that.
Very good.
Yeah, so that's the old business that I have.
Else have any questions or comments in regards to old business? We will then move on to new business if we have any.
Just one, just one thing, Leanne. Like, we, we made the motion last year, last meeting to defer the interest for the water utility payment is, was that okay with UARB?
Yes, everything we asked for, yeah. It was approved.
Okay, we're going to move on to new business. New business would include?
Just let you know some of the things that we've been working on here. Have a department head meeting every day with my team in the tourism area. So I sent you out a report, but I'll just go over some of the points. Dan has been contacting lots of local businesses. He's also set up a Facebook page for Victoria County operators. Finding that that's working really well. I think there's about 80 that are logged on or logged in and accepted the invite and they're actively engaged in that. Heard today that possibly there might be a reason that a lot of the programs aren't related to tourism yet, the federal programs and provincial programs that are coming out. Because I think they might be waiting till, to figure out how long this goes on and how deep we get into this. So we're, we're feeling pretty confident that there will be some more things coming out in the future. Just also to let you know that Tom Taggart, who is the rural representative for FCM and who has also been in the news the last several days. I think he's the counselor in the area of Colchester where this tragedy is happening. He was asking some questions related to COVID impacts on tourism. Dan sent him a brilliant email that was passed on, so that's gone as far as as the FCM at this point. So really, really good. Patrick has, in the last week, has worked on about 43 businesses looking to access EDO funding, or sorry, federal funding. So that's just last week. There was probably double that the week before that, so working on all of that. The housing study, the, the housing survey that we have out, we have about 250 responses on it and they are compiling the information. So hopefully we'll get some good things coming out of that. We, as you all know, we had the budget meeting last week and made a few decisions out of that, which we will, we'll probably have another one just to finalize the numbers on that. We're still waiting to hear from AMAN's NSFM. We're hoping by we're hoping to hear by the end of this week, I think, if we are going to have some provincial-wide program.
We're kind of losing your volume a little bit there. Sorry.
That never happens to me. So, yeah, we are waiting to hear from NSFM and AMAN's to see if there is something that we can figure out with the province together for payment repair, tax repayment program. We've sent our second load of blue bags off to Camden Recycling. But just to let you know, Divertment of Scotia is closed now. It's getting harder to get rid of blue bags. So we can store for a while, but we may have to look at some other type of, we may have to look at something else. I know we have had a lot of calls and you have had a lot of calls related to opening up of the landfill related, based on spring cleaning and things that are happening. We are looking at different possibilities for that. So the public works team are in contact with other areas around the province, too, to see if there is something that could be done. And we'll probably slowly open it up with safety precautions in place. Just, we don't have the specifics on it yet and the details, but we'll be ruling that out as we know something. Just to keep you all aware, Destination Cape Breton and Acoa are holding off the call for applications for festivals and events funding. It's still on hold. Don't want, not exactly sure where festivals and events are heading this year, unfortunately. The seniors delivery program is now up and running and the fire departments are administering that. So I think today is the first day, which is great to hear, and we'll see how that goes. Based on some questions in the past and some water breaks that we've had, Jocelyn and Lyle are working on getting some bids on an alert system, similar to the alert system that the provinces are getting a little bit of slack on in the last couple of days related to why it wasn't in place. So they are getting some quotes from a couple of companies where possibly we have our own text system that sends, sends a text out or a message out to local residents if there's a water break or if there's something that's happening. So we are investigating some of those things right now. Also, just to let you know, on our last council session of April 6th, we had 389 views as of today, as of this morning, which is pretty impressive. So we may want to think about this way of the future, or that this system as a way of the future. I also have a motion. Possibly, we are possibly looking into PCAP funding. The PCAP system invites became available as of this week and you can put in PCAP applications up until the end of May. We'd like to possibly get something in early. I know we were talking in the past related to the Ingunish waterline extension for the development in that area. The PCAP funding that is available isn't probably not as big as we would like it to be. But it might be, based on the timing of this, it's probably better than nothing. So to put in a PCAP application, we need a motion from council or a resolution. So I'm wondering if I could have a resolution from council supporting the submission of a project for funding in consideration under PCAP. The project funding at this point for a waterline extension extending past the hill for another bit of a distance. Total funding based on other projects around the province of about $570,000. And that's the waterline piece of that. So we'd like to put in some PCAP funding. We might get some related to it. I don't know if we'll get a full third because there's, it's not a huge piece that's available, but it might qualify. So I'm wondering if I could have a motion for that.
Just, just before we do that, maybe just clarify that PCAP stands for Provincial Capital Assistance.
Program, correct.
Right, yeah. As we're doing.
I'd like to make a motion. I will proceed with that application.
That's been moved by the Deputy Warden, or do we have a second or for that, please?
I'll second that.
It was seconded by Councilor McGinnis. All in favor?
Just a question, just a question before we vote. It wasn't clear. Is this the extension in Cape North?
No, this is Ingunish.
Ingunish, okay. I didn't hear that. Thank you.
You're good with that now, Councilor?
Yes.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded. Question, did you have a question before we vote on it, Councilor McDonald?
Interesting question in general. Is that the extension that's coming from Ingunish Harbour to Skicake Smokey? Is that in reference to that?
Right, yes.
No residents involved to that, has there?
Well, there is. We're thinking of for the, if we're doing it, we're going to keep it up, going up the hill a little bit there.
Okay.
So reach a couple more areas. So yes, there will be, it, there will be the same consideration in Cape North as there is in Ingunish. So we are hopefully looking at a third, a third, a third from feds, provincial, and the municipality third will be made up of residents in the area and businesses that will be using it and the municipality.
Great, thank you. Just understanding that.
So the motion is to apply for funding approval via PCAP for that waterline extension in Ingunish. It has been moved. It has been seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that is all I have. Just one other little tidbit, an interesting thing to let you know that there's 28 people right now that are watching live on Facebook.
Very good. Well, for those folks that are out there, welcome to council. Next item for council is taxation update.
Yeah, so taxation update, or see from Alex today. Just to let you know, today there's 1.133 million outstanding with 663,000 in current and 470 in arrears. This is compared to 1.3 million outstanding this time last year, which had 749,000 in current and 557 in arrears. So this is a difference of about 174,000 total, which is to the good. So 86,000 better in current and 88 better in arrears. So while we're seeing a slowdown in collections, we're still receiving payments and are holding our ground, at least for now. So again, that's the work of a lot of, that's a lot of hard work to bring us to this point. And it just, it's so disheartening to see that this is happening, that COVID came up when, just when we're starting to get our feet underneath us, so.
Thank you. And again, we recognize the efforts of staff to approve the collection again this year. We appreciate that. And if you'd let staff know, express those comments from council. Next item up for discussion is Department of Transportation Infrastructure renewal concerns. We'll start with District number one.
Yeah, there are a couple of things. There's a couple of areas in Jamesville, Iona, Grass Cove area with the shoulders of the road are subsiding. It has to be looked at right away. I think TIR is aware of it because there's the pylons in every, in every hole, but you never know. There's one area on the way to Grass Cove, there's a hole right in the middle of the road. There is a pylon in that, too. So hopefully they know about it and will look at it ASAP. Also potholes throughout Iona and across the bridge in Iona are getting worse by the day. They have to be filled in soon because there's going to be a front end of the car taken out pretty soon. And again, just a reminder for the grading throughout the district and when it becomes dry enough. That's it.
Thank you very much. We have recorded those and we are going to move up to District Seven. And again, because Councilor Budge is joined in by phone. And once, if you have any, Councilor Budge, we are going to accept them and then probably put you on mute because we're picking up a little background noise. So, Councilor Budge, do you have anything TIR concerns?
No, I have nothing.
Thank you very much. We will drop back to District number two, please. Councilor McLeod, any TIR concerns for your district?
No, they, they, no, not in this moment. I know this is spring now and we're just waiting for the, the cross come, gone out. No, not yet. Nothing. Thanks.
Thank you very much. District number four, Councilor McGinnis. So you'll have to, there you go.
Well, I'm sorry, but sorry about that. The number one concern is there's a pile of damage done. I know they did a wonderful job and I actually commended the TIR. I know at some meetings this winter for the great job they were doing. And I guess no fault of their own, but it's hard to see these posts for the guardrails. When they try to widen the roads, what, what I'm getting is there are hundreds upon hundreds of of the support pylons on the back of the guardrails that are damaged seriously. And it's going to be a tremendous amount of work to have them fixed. So I know there should be made aware of that. And if you know, if you travel along the, any parts of the, especially the rural areas, they were, they were doing a great job to widen the roads out, but, but the, the, the posts behind the guardrails are really in a bad, bad condition. And I think in case of an accident, it would possibly have an effect on a car going in the ditch as opposed to, the guardrails are there to keep cars out of the ditch. And that's a concern I have. And the other one, of course, is the ferry in Ingetown. Been in contact with Mr. McCaulage in Halifax and was assured 10 days ago that things were ongoing and that we were going to have it before long. And he had a concern about distancing issues with the staff. And I brought up the issue of, of foregone if the fares and he kind of verbally guaranteed that there wouldn't be any fares taken because of the COVID-19 situation where they, they wouldn't accept, they wouldn't be going to fares to accept the fee. So that's a sort of a positive note, but in the meantime, they're all free now that the ferry's not there. They're going to have a tariff before long. And that's about it, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe we go back to District One for a minute. Councilor McNeil, did you have your hand up something before we move on?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to ask, Leanne, did you get in touch with Steve McDonald and Chisholm about virtual meeting for spring, this, this spring?
Yeah, they're just waiting to get back to us about a time when, a time that works for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to District Five, Councilor Patterson, please.
Thank you, Warden. Following from Councilor McGinnis, some positive notes again. There was actually a crew out this week on the Camtad Road doing some patching, pothole filling, Paul. So I guess you got to be good to do that for you. But anyway, thank you for getting that done. And as I keep saying, just can't wait to smell that asphalt sometime this summer.
Very good. You're very optimistically. Appreciate that. Very good. You're very optimistic. Appreciate that. District number six, deputy warden.
Yes, Warden, thank you. Just a couple of things. It's, it's great seeing the TIR employees are out, actually replacing some signs on the side road. So that's great to see that they're open working. Biggest thing I'd like to ask for, I've noticed a lot of erosion along the harbor here in Inghamish on the Cabot Trail. I've noticed two or three locations that are getting quite serious, but I'm wondering if TIR could undertake an actual good survey of the area, say from knotty pine cottages. Let's go right over to the clam flats, which TIR, TIR would be where I'm speaking of. But like I said, two or three areas are eroding underneath the guardrail and it's only a matter of time. It's only going to get more serious. As counselor McNeil also mentioned, grading of the side roads is still critical. And again, my beach crossing road took more damage in the storm last night. So looking forward to having Steve down to take a look at that one. But that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy warden. We did speak to counselor Budge. Counselor McDonald.
Uh, no, there was no concerns other than what was brought up at last council there. So good for district eight.
Thank you very much. And district three, I have no TIR concerns this evening. So now we're going to move on to, are there any notice of motions tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to district concerns and we'll start with counselor McDonald and district number eight.
Uh, it's coming out here again. There's no concerns in district eight this evening.
Very good. Thank you very much. District seven, counselor Budge.
Uh, no concerns.
Thank you very much. District six, deputy Warden Duff.
Uh, just, just one concern. I was in touch with the food bank north of Smokey here, just to see how they were making out. And after the last, I guess two weeks ago, they had. A day for deliveries and pickup and they had an increase of 25%. So it was quite substantial increase in the usage of the food bank. Again, they are, do rely on public donations or private donations to succeed. At this time, I know we haven't finalized our budget yet, but I am wondering if I could get permission to. Take $1,000 from my district budget to provide some much needed funds to the north of Smokey Food Bank. And part two of that, I know Lydia is working with the food banks. I'm just wondering if Lydia could give me an update on what she is able to do for the food banks also, but I, I will be in touch with her. And I'd like to make that a motion, $1,000 if possible from my budget, even though it has not been approved yet for this fiscal. Is that possible?
Yeah, I just, before we do vote on that, I do know there is a provincial program note that. There may be additional funds provided to food banks in the event that does happen. Is anybody opposed $2,000 from deputy Warden's district budget to go to Food Bank North?
I second it.
It's seconded by counselor McNeil. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Very minded. Motion is carried. And so if you need the money prior to the finalization of the budget, we'll go with that. Deputy Ward.
Thank you very much. That's it for district six. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District five, any district concerns tonight, sir?
No really major concerns, just that I think everybody's experiencing the same, the same situation. Most people are abiding by the guidelines or regulations or whatever, limiting their trips, whether they're medical or for groceries or whatever. People are keeping in touch with Zoom. Zoom, everybody knows about Zoom. I wish I had bought stocks in Zoom about a month ago because nobody knew about it. And now everywhere you go, it is. And telephoning and so on, checking in with people and so on and so forth. Just to kind of a heads up, I noticed in the paper today. That counselor Prince and counselor McMullin from CBRM are getting calls about people being restless. You know, and I think as the spring goes on, people will become more and more restless and it's something we probably should be aware of and maybe keep an eye on. You know, this is such a strange situation for everybody that, you know, it's just. You know, unheard of in our generation and it really has changed the way we live. And as Leanne mentioned a while ago, you know, maybe we'll never see each other in person again. You know, because we could do the business, you know, in, in this manner. So anyway. Greetings from district five. All seems to be well. We had a bit of snow, but it's gone and things are pretty good.
Thank you very much for the update for district five, sir. District number four, any district concerns tonight, sir?
Well, I guess my biggest concern is, is the upcoming lobster fishery. Crab season has started. Anticipating 50% drop in, in the prices from last year. We, we all. We all joined in a, a survey that was done last week. Actually, the, the votes are going to be tabulated tonight. To decide whether to, to go ahead with the season or, or not. And I feel that the majority of the vote will be that the season not, not happen. But the federal government is just not listening to us. Right in my backyard here between Ingetown Harbor and, and the harbor, Little River. There is a minimum of 150 people employed. Which has a big impact on this whole district, let alone our whole county. And that's only two harbors suffer. Many that are in our, in our county. I think it's, it's dreadful that the, the feds are not listening to us. If we get the stocks of $3 for lobster. People think that every fisherman is a multimillionaire. Well, I can guarantee you they're not. And if you can't operate for $3 a pound, we did, we did 30 years ago, but you can't in today's world. It costs $3 to catch them. And there are talks of limited amounts coming in and. It's just a big concern. I really, I really am. Afraid what's going to happen. It's looking like it's, they're not going to listen to us. We've been lobbying all types of organizations that we have within our, within our county, within our fishing district. But to no avail. And hopefully this vote will give another message, but we'll just keep our fingers crossed. And while it's in my thoughts here, my memory is not good, as many of you know, as tonight's an example. And I just wondered about, about the, the amount of proceeds that we gave to the Capitol Relay. And I'm not sure what that amount is. Maybe somebody could share that? Does anybody know?
$8,000, I believe. That was through the sponsorship of the event, which included the cost for EM. For the ambulances as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I, I'm just wondering if we might be able to put a portion or a substantial portion of that amount to the food bank. Which is very in need of it at this point in, in our dilemma here. I don't know. What, what's the feeling of the rest of the?
Well, I, I guess I would say this, counselor, is that we're going to have another budget meeting probably next week. So probably we can have that discussion.
Okay.
Is, are you okay with that?
That's fine.
We'll be looking at a number of those. We know there's a number of events that we sponsored that have been canceled and we're going to have to.
Okay.
Probably reassigning some of those funds elsewhere. So, and it's a good point and it's, it's a worthwhile. Place for those funds. But we would put it there. I think that's where the discussion would be best had.
Okay, fair enough.
You okay with that?
That's fine. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Appreciate your comments on the fishery as well. Going to drop down to district number two.
Uh, yeah, I just, it's like a common most concerned about, I speak with the CEO about this. Some residents are starting doing some spring rentals. And all the, for example, the, the roof, all that debris go, they have to wait until the landfill will be open. So it will be good if we can remind the residents, if they're going to do some renovations. Just aware the, the landfill is not open and the only way they can take that will be in a commercial, they will have to call some commercial. Company to take that and will be open for the, to take that. So I just went to put it in this to, to the people can read it and about that. It's only that one concern.
Okay. And I, I think if I, I heard earlier. CAO had indicated there's going to be some discussions about some solid waste with solid waste staff. So can we put that on as a, a concern from council? When you have that discussion with the director of public works?
Yep. And that's why we're having the discussion with public works because we're hearing from councils that they're hearing from residents who are interested in possibly going in. So. It might be a day a week that it'll be open to the public. So we're gonna, we're seeing what is safe for all and what we can, what we can handle. So.
Yeah, yeah, because it's going to start with the rentals where the weather is getting better. Right. So at least, you know, get out about that. And just want to put in the minutes. For that. Yeah, thank you.
And.
And Meryl.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to comment on Merrill's comment related to. Moving funds from the Cabot Trail Relay. We also did talk about at our budget, what we would be doing with funds. That did not get spent this year on the areas that we thought. So we know that we. Will, we've created a new COVID line on this year's budget, which has not been passed, but we know that there will be more, more areas in COVID where we're going to have to chip in.
Okay, thank you very much. And when you had the conversation with the director of public works, you'll notify us of what. What changes if any will be made and there'll be communication go from communications office in those regards. So residents will know both north and south. Very good. Thank you very much. Is that it for district two?
Yes, it's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District one, any district concerns?
Uh, just an FYI to residents in the area that COVID posters that, that are on the website and Facebook too, they can print off. But if individuals can't print them off, some posters were delivered to the Little Dipper store in Iona. There'll be some at the post office. And I have some here. So if they want to get in touch with me, if they can't print them off, they, they, they can call me.
Thank you very much. No district concerns per se for district three. Just want to mention that. We had mentioned the fisheries and its importance tomorrow. CAO and I have been asked to have a conversation with Babta. We're not sure what that conversation is, but I suspect it will have something to do with the impact that. The current pandemic will have on the tourism industry as we move forward, particularly as it affects Victoria County in particular, this area. So. We will be sharing any information if any becomes available from that. The other item I just wanted to mention is that CAO and I. Are asked, as are all wardens, mayors. And CAOs, there is a weekly NSFM AM AMN's meeting. It is on Wednesday nights at 6 o'clock. It is just for an hour. It is chaired by Mayor Moon from Yarmouth as president. They ask for questions. So if you have any questions specific to Victoria County or your district, if you want to forward to us, we could include them. But generally speaking, they're fairly generic, generic concerns that are based by most municipalities. In the province. So if you have any particular concerns that you want brought to that, then you certainly email us. So that's it for district concerns. We are going to move on to committee reports. So are there any committee reports? Does anybody have anything they wish to? I know we're have difficulty having committee meetings because of the current atmosphere and environment. However, I know there's been a couple of committees that have used Zoom as well for those. So is there anybody that wishes to comment or bring an update on any committees that they sit on?
I want something?
Sure.
Uh, it's just what I said, the senior officer committee. They have a party line just because we are now in Facebook and we are in more open to the public. And just remind them the party line is Mondays, 1 to 3 PM. It's something for seniors over 55 to, they can just walk, just talk and it's just for, take the insulation, insulation out. Be a part of something. And they have, they want to start with a senior lunch, virtual senior lunch next Wednesday, 11 to 12. They, everything, this information can see it in senior safety program, Victoria County, Cape Breton Facebook page. And all the information is there. So they can be involved. So it's just, or I see that I just tell them, it's some stuff for, for them for, they can start doing in the day, you know, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update. Appreciate it. Any other committee updates, please? None? Do we have any bylaws this evening? None? Do we have any policies for review?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. We don't have any new bylaws or policies. However, we are a part of a program. That Cape Breton is now taking part in and we are taking inventory of the bylaws that we have. It's an initiative island wide. And we are, have contracted out to Portside Law, I believe. And the province is involved in this and we are looking at inventorying our bylaw, current bylaws that we have. And if any of them are outdated, we will be looking to get rid of them or to update them. And then also checking to see what other bylaws there are around the island and seeing if we can get similar bylaws. So. We are trying to standardize the templates related to the bylaws on the island. So just to let you know that this is a project that is going on right now.
Thank you. And I also sat in on a training education session last week about how to. Familiarize yourself with virtual online meetings and as a result of sitting in on that session, they did send out a generic bylaw for having virtual meetings. We don't have a policy as most municipalities don't at this point because it's as a result of, of the pandemic. So maybe we'll circulate that policy. For our next meeting and you can have a quick review, but I suspect we'll be meeting in this fashion for probably the next month at least. So. We don't need the, need the policy per se, but it would be perhaps nice to have one. And if this one is available and meets our needs, I think we can adopt it. So it's be a good, be a good practice, I suspect. So if you could circulate that, Leanne, I would appreciate that. And finally. Any correspondence? None?
Uh, just the correspondence, all correspondence that I have received, I have forwarded on.
Okay. Our next. Schedule, we, we need to schedule a budget meeting. We will wait till we hear from CAO of those dates. I suspect that's in the next week or so, is it not?
I'll have to check with the CFO, but it should be in the very near future. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And our next council meeting is.
I don't know if we have scheduled another one. It may depend on Norman's schedule. But possibly May 4th.
I'm thinking we may have put those dates. How is your schedule for May, counselor McDonald?
Oh, let me just check here.
No, as I've written on the phone, it's fine.
Okay. So we will schedule May 4th as our next council meeting and more than likely it will be a virtual meeting. So we will schedule May 4 as our next council meeting and more than likely it will be a virtual meeting. We will notify you when the budget meeting in the next week or so will be notified either by CAO or Chief Financial Officer. We will review the budget and the impacts that COVID has had on it. And we will be looking at our financials and seeing what adjustments we'll have to make as we move forward. Are there any other questions, concerns to bring to council tonight?
Maybe we'll just end on a positive note. Did any of you hear Kerry Smith from Destination Cape Breton on CBC last week, late last week? They've started a program, 30 Days for Thanks, I think it's called, and they're honoring people on the front lines. And he was asked by the interviewer, well, who come up with the idea? And the person, our Dan Coffin, is the man to come up with the idea. So kudos to Dan. He'd be behind the scenes on that one, but your influence is being, being felt. Thanks very much.
Very good. Good point, Counselor, and we'll note that in the minutes. So very good. And thank you, Dan, if you're still with us. So. Are there any other? I just want to thank council and staff tonight for going through this. It's not always the easiest way to run a meeting, but you guys, for you folks were excellent tonight and I appreciate your cooperation. And each one of these, we, we're doing better and give you marks for tonight. And we'll be talking to you because we won't probably be seeing you for the next.
I move for adjourned.
I, could I have one more comment?
Yes.
I think it might be appropriate if we could send condolences and let Colchester County know that they're in our, that's in our prayers at this time. I think it'd be appropriate that our council pass on that message to, to them in this time.
Yeah, very appropriate and good thoughts, sir. And perhaps we should also send a, a note to the family of Council approach as well. We did recognize earlier in the meeting, but we'll formalize it and we'll leave that up to the CAO.
Yeah. And just to let you know, I reached out to the CAO down there this morning. And he informed me that basically everyone that works in the municipality knows somebody who was affected by it. So.
Yeah. And I, I can tell you that was interesting. CAO mentioned earlier that we've been in touch with Tom Taggart on behalf of the FCM. They were looking for some information she referenced about what the pandemic was having on tourism. And he reached out to Victoria County because of our obvious reliance on tourism. So it's interesting. We had a couple of conversations with him last week and I sent a note in today. Those of us that have known Tom for a while expressed our sympathy term and about him and our residency regards to what they've been going through the last couple of days. So yeah, it's duly noted. And thank you very much for that suggestion, sir. We maturely follow up on that. All right. Anything else to come before council tonight? Just keep in mind that it's good to do our daily check-ins with the CAO and it's good to do our weekly check-ins. And please, if you have any concerns, let Leanne or myself know and stay well. Good night.